Want to get a motion though?
Don't be a...
I move for the second of all those in favor.
I gotta tell you what I was hoping for is you can stand and apply it.
Yeah, he's a gentleman.
Okay, let's go into old business policy placing social services to press. Mr. Ketchel, would you go ahead?
Yes, if you remember last, uh, last meeting, this was a policy that was being reviewed. Essentially, uh, what the current policy said, uh, it says is that, uh, people have to, any social service request has to go through a petition process. And that vote was taken on November fifth, 2013. Then, uh, at some point in time later than that, there was apparently a requirement that the petitions had to be in by a state, a date certain. Last week, uh, or last meeting, we were talking about this particular policy and there's questions about, well, there were questions raised about do we want like the Belgrade Lights Business Group to do this? Do we want, what groups do we want? What are considered social service organizations? And so that was the, essentially the date, the, the, the issue was what is the deadline? And what is a social service organization? How do you want that represented?
Yeah?
General, if you think everybody should be included to say that, all organizations other than municipal organizations, meaning the, 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 money made from the town has to submit a petition.
That's fine with me.
I mean, if that's what you want to do.
I don't think because the Ketchel has, keep the preference on this. I think we had preferences on it. We discussed the fact that there was, there are probably some of these organizations that we don't want to have to petition every time. If they're asking for something like fifteen million dollars, they have to petition for it. That's a fair amount of work to get that money, but it's up to the board.
You could say that any non, any organization, uh, nonprofit organization from outside the town would have to petition. Uh, other organizations could submit a letter. Uh, but there aren't many organizations within the town with that petition, I think. You've got the, the Lakes groups, the Lake group, you've got the Belgrade Lights Business Group. I mean, I don't think, well, the Food Pantry, but that's up every year on the warrant, I believe. So you don't have many groups like that. You could kind of exempt the, the groups that, uh, the social service groups that are in the town from petitioning. Require everyone else to, then you have to come up with a date by which you want the petitions in.
The economic definition of social services.
Well, you don't really have to if you say all organizations requesting money through the warrant, the town meeting warrant process that exists in the town. So my letter, if you're outside the town, you must petition.
I think you recall why we...
Oh, yes.
...set a time, a date on that because we had people in the office here calling these groups. Well, they're calling and telling them that, we said, "We're not going to do that. That's wasting money. We're not going to send them letters. They need to come to us. We're not going to advertise it."
That's a good point in that if you change the policy, you want to let everyone know the policy to the extent that you could.
But we did talk about this last meeting in our, we were supposed to go, go away and think about it.
And I still got next feeling, right?
Well, my only is if you want to limit one, you need one more.
So we're going to have all of them come in with petition?
Why can't we just have like all of the outside, like you mentioned, all the outside of Belgrade?
They aren't within the town.
Yeah.
They're in town, uh, they can send a letter requesting...
Sort of owe it to the groups in town to bypass, you know, I like the idea of a letter, I suppose.
That was Danny's idea, that one.
Well, yeah.
I wish it were mine, but it wasn't.
Yeah, I like Danny's idea of letters.
Oh, it used to be all.
So, I mean, I guess I'd be in favor of, you know, Belgrade groups just not having to petition, but all outside groups having to petition perhaps. Does that...
What's a Belgrade group? Can you, can you give me the list?
I think the Belgrade Regional Business Group, Belgrade Lakes Association, Belgrade Lakes.
That's a big group.
That's a big group. What's the reason that's wrong?
Well, the Belgrade Lakes Association is a regional...
It's a regional group.
But it's based in Belgrade.
Yeah, so, so is the, the Belgrade Regional Business Group based in Belgrade. And that's what you need.
That's what, yeah.
I think we should have an exception to the outside managers. We have two outside managers, I believe, that have been on the, in town warrant for a long, long time. Always passed, and then, and I think those two groups.
So the literacy group was not...
No. The regional business group.
The fireworks.
No. Outside, outside groups. You have the people, you go to hospice.
Yeah.
And, no, meals.
Spike generations.
Spike generations and hospice. Those two, they, they were part of a big group we used to approve, put the group in votes. And many of those came before us, we didn't, and when we sounded, didn't get approved, and they didn't go to the meeting. So when the swipe was ahead, you know, enough is enough, you know, we just keep going, we don't get the board, and so we have to keep having these extra articles. These two organizations do owe citizens a really big debt service. I would suggest that all outside groups with an exception of those two, and should be able to give them, in all its shown patriotism, of those people, that people.
Yes, Mr. Ketchel. I've been thinking about this a little bit as well. You could sanction any, any groups that sanction by the board, should have to petition. If you could sanction those groups, so, you can keep that like this. If the board wants to sanction some groups...
And also allow for some other group to come and ask to be sanctioned. And not do it, so that's basically have the opportunity to be in that group. So it has the power to...
Is that a question? Jack?
How about the Belgrade Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts? They used to be regular, some of them, warrants.
I don't think they're there anymore.
The, the news, is that, are they, the kid, are they Indian or something about the news papers?
Yes, there's a, what's called a forever article that will give in the, has given the Belgrade Boy Scout and Girl Scouts, uh, the money, that portion of money that they work for, for the newsletter paper. They pay our, pay our staff if we have to fund them, but by and large, uh, they get the money from that. My understanding is that both groups are either not, uh, evident in the town of Belgrade, I guess that's the word I'm using, or that there's only one Boy Scout in the town of Belgrade.
Barrett, go ahead.
Yeah, we're down to two. He gets cut candidates, great. The, the Cub Scouts have been dissolved. The Boy Scouts, like we're meeting, committee's meeting next on the sixteenth of December. Whether we should even ask for another chart because this doesn't make any sense. Uh, so the Boy Scouts are on their way out, and technically still there today, but they need, they need it probably to change.
And the Girl Scouts?
Okay, from my perspective, we're not making much progress here, so we either need a motion, we need a table. Ms. Barrett?
Uh, I'd move that, um, I think I worry about. I'd move that all, uh, I'd leave you here. I like your sanctioning idea. I don't think I have a word.
Perhaps what I can do, if it's a pleasure of the board, I can go back to the next board meeting, draft a wording around the sanctioning idea in a new format, in a standard format, and bring it back and, and that's the best way to move forward.
Do you see the table as a new format?
I think, it's one of many formats you could use. This one has the basic policy statement, a series.
This was designed by Dr. Mallard.
No, no, actually it was pulled...
I like to see it.
We could come up with any standard format. The issue is standardizing the policy. But coming up with, with a policy following some format that will be a standard format for us.
Explain how that would work. I guess I'm a little lost.
How would it work? This X...
The plan, the thinking.
Well, all I'd say is you, you as a board would say, "Look, uh, we believe that these groups, X, Y, Z, are integral in terms of the operation of the town. They've been important to the town, and we're going to authorize them to move forward without a petition. Other groups have an opportunity to sanction, to, to request, uh, the board to be on that list, but if not, if the board does not approve of those groups, then they have to go out and petition. So it doesn't eliminate their opportunity to get on the warrant and go through the petition process, uh, but at the same time, it, it restricts to those groups that you want without having to put them through the arduous process of getting a petition."
I think Barrett's sanction, sanctioning procedure could, they should have to submit a letter so we know that we want them to issue that.
Well, they'd have to, that's the point, they'd have to submit a letter.
But they'd be on if they sent them the letter.
Yeah, you would, you'd sanction the organization, authorizing them to submit a letter should they want the money. If they don't want the money, they would submit the letter. Otherwise, if you don't have that sanction, then they would be required to go get a petition. And that's the kind of format.
So are we still gonna, are they gonna be secret ballot type of deals?
Be on the warrants.
They would only be, they would always be on the warrant, but they wouldn't, they'd get on the warrant with the letter in the sanctioning process rather than the petition process.
We've got some now, but they're not secret ballot, correct?
No, but you've got some.
You had one last year.
No, 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 you had it on the warrant, I believe. I don't think it was a secret ballot. I think it was on the warrant where you just raised your hand, because I think that that was the issue with the fireworks last year.
I just think if we're going to do this, we need to put it out of all the votes.
I don't think so.
I think it needs, they all need votes to come to that.
Well, they shouldn't.
Absolutely, because I don't like this kind of, it's kind of picking and choosing. And that's not, that's not what I'm in for.
Well, they have to give them a sanction if they have one on the warrant.
I understand.
If you put them on the secret ballot.
But we, we decide, Joe Blow can warn them. You know, I, I kind of like it the other way, where they have to go and get signatures, and it takes...
Well, that's the debate.
That's not, it takes the, that's what I want to put it. It takes the wrong responsibility away from, away from us, but not picking and choosing. But that's my thing. I just think it's a fair way to do it. On a petition part and...
Ernie, I wouldn't get too involved in that. All I said was all the policies should look right. It's just, it's just standard way of doing business.
And I understand where you're coming from.
Well, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to help you out, that's all.
No, and I know that, and I thought about this a little bit, and I just, it's fair as fair.
I think I agree with Rick. One does, and they all should do it.
But then didn't you just say that it's arduous for certain groups to have to go through that petition process every year?
It is. It's arduous to, for, they have to go out and get how many, how many signatures?
Well, based on the last, one hundred and seventy.
I think that's strong. And I think if we want to do the petition process, then we, uh, should... I would suggest that they, when they do the petition, they actually...
Probably do that.
That's the one, whatever.
You might go to...
Yeah, I might go along with that, too.
To the last member, too.
Yeah.
Or go along with that, we should recommend it to them, that maybe since you're going to be going on petition, to go with all voters, the board is very debatable, and obviously the town is very, uh, services that you provide by inserting this language, you won't have to go petition.
I'd go along with that. I, I like that, because we need a, you know, it's going to be another whole board. And then... I don't like to say fair, because, what if you...
Well, they would, they would come in every, well, they, once they got a forever article, that would be it.
I try. You have to get the number of signatures.
Initially.
So if they get a positive vote of agreement, so after they get the forever article, then they...
Goes on every year, they don't have to petition.
They don't have to...
Until it's changed by a future...
The letter, they don't, they don't need the letter, it'll just be automatic?
Well, you just pick it up from the last town meeting, and it just goes on there automatically on the X warrant.
And if you recall, why we did this is because we had people coming out of woodworks, coming to the town, and you just throw it in, and it was like, I don't remember the number of this group.
We're not the, well, we had seventeen or eighteen.
Yeah.
We're not the only town that's struggling with this.
And that's right. And, in fact, I didn't really push that we, uh, set, and the groups did too, and I mean, I gotta agree, it's, if I want to donate to these guys, I'll donate to them. If the town wants them, and they need to go to the secret ballot, let the town petition them.
One of the, Ernie, one of the, one of the protections that we actually have is if they want more money, they're going to have to do a lot of this.
Right.
It would be a forever article for that amount of money if they asked for the first sanction, I guess that's...
No, that's, that was it.
So I take it the subject of the board is, uh, we, the town would do, if you leave it like it is, then you don't want, you know, the town.
I don't, I'm uncomfortable with that, too. I understand what you're saying, I'm comfortable with it, but we, we need to do some of these oddball groups that we have to run, get on the ballot for, for that forever article.
And something...
So it has to be voted on.
The taxpayers would name vote it down.
So it has to be voted on.
I haven't seen them get voted down yet.
Yeah, they all get passed.
I mean, that, you're right, but it's that way there, the taxpayers.
At, at one point, when we first moved here, there was a huge thing about these outfits coming in and, and, you know, wanting money every year, and I just think that, so Rick's idea is pretty good.
So does, does the article that goes before the town have to be written for the exact amount of petition called for?
Yeah.
If you don't have, if you don't have some process to limit the amount of people, organizations that can petition to come in, and how do you budget for the social services part of that, part of the budget?
Well, that would be, the budget, Jack, would be based on the articles and how much money is asked on, and whether it's approved. It is, if it isn't approved, then it isn't in the budget. You know, if the town doesn't approve it, then it's not in the budget.
I think what you're saying, you'd have this information like all the other department heads coming in before budget start.
To the committee.
To the committee.
You don't know until the town, the, the, the town meeting what you have, and you can have, theoretically, you can have quite an unlimited amount of requests.
What we have, in fact.
Right, I mean, any number of organizations petition, and if they get their petition approved, they go on the secret ballot. And if they're passed, and the, the way the budget is built, every one of those is put into the budget as if it were approved. If it doesn't get approved, it just shrinks the budget. You can't raise, of course, we have a closed budget, so we don't have an open warrant, I mean, a warrant. We don't have an open warrant.
What's the process for stopping a forever warrant article?
Just by the next town meeting, someone puts in a, a petition. If it's a warrant article, if someone puts in a warrant article that requires a change in whatever article they're in, so, we call them forever articles, but the articles are worded unless changed by a future warrant article.
Does that require a petition?
No.
So, just educate me here. You get a forwar, forever warrant article that says group X is going to get a thousand dollars a year from the town, and that goes on, and three years later, I say, "I don't think they should get that money anymore." I'm Citizen Joe.
So you can request...
Does that, does that then become a, an article at town meeting? Or do I have to have a petition to get that on the agenda for town meeting?
If you really want, if you really want it, you have to petition. Otherwise, the only, the only way to not hold in a petition, the only, uh, was to go to vote, vote three on this petition, basically. Otherwise, it's not allowed.
You could ask, you could ask the board.
You would ask the board, and if the board turns you down, then you go petition, if the board accepted.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a handle on, I get a picture of, if you set this up as a forever thing, and as Rick said, you know, that some group comes along and uses that wording, and they're all getting passed as like bond issues, then, then what, how do we act, how do we stop that if it's...
That's how you stop it.
No longer approved, the select board can, can put that article...
Put a warrant article together, and if it's approved by the town, it stops. If it doesn't, then it keeps going on.
At least the town has a chance for it to sue them.
Okay. You want to make this a motion, or you want, you just want to go away and bring something back?
Well, my understanding, if I, if I'm hearing correctly, that what you want is everyone petition.
Yep.
Then the, 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 the town manager would explain to those that are petitioning as they come in for petitions, that if you would like to, you could put language in there that would allow it to become a forever article, and we could develop language for that. And so those groups could go do that, uh, if they're passed, and they become forever articles. The question I have now is, is there a date certain by which you want these petitions in?
I would think they gotta be in by the same time the department heads have to have their budgets.
Well, that's, that's not going to happen this year.
Well, I know it's not, and I don't think we can even do this this year. I think we're, I think we're out of the box for that. I think it's for the next year to...
Remember, you're not going to take the final votes, I mean, at least according to my schedule, there won't be final voting in terms of, of the budget itself, uh, until sometime between mid-November and December. Now, we could always extend that, but I just...
So wait, what do you got for a date that you'd like?
I would like to have the budget process finished by December fifteenth, but that's just idealized, that's what I would like to do.
So when do you think these need to be in?
I would, I would say they, they should be in by the end of November, no later than the end of last, because we can work on those at that time. We just add them in, we can work on those.
By next year, it ought to be the same time as...
Barrett?
I guess, after listening to everything that's been said, I guess I would put the law, I think that's a game this thing to do, somebody else, probably, if you want a forever, you know, I just think, maybe like it is, through the petition process, those people are dedicated, they do it, and they're glad they do it, and they, they go up to the transportation for your own signatures, I mean. Unfortunately, it's, it's just a safer way to protect them, taxpayers, from something sliding in here and all of a sudden squeaking out a forever article for people's...
Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, a, a compromise, if you will, so for, you know, it's, it's a tiny, it's good for three, or that, the other three is going to be a little, they're coming in again, or five if they're... We do that with, with release for the, may bring that with the group there. And it's, it's not quite the same thing, but so the idea that that can back prove that...
I guess if we, if we was going to do that, my, my, I was real concerned with it. I guess if we was going to do that, an organization would be limited to just one forever. Uh, if they have a forever article, I'm going to just bring up one where my concern comes from. If we was to do an article to give vote registration dollars to the, to a group? To a group? To a group, yeah, that's what I'm saying. To a group, that's all they would be typing. That's, it'd have to be, right? Forever it is. As a matter of, if it goes up to thirty thousand dollars a year, it would be, that's, that's really, I'm comfortable with that, because it really, that's, it is taxpayers' dollars, and it isn't taxpayers' dollars. People register votes, it's just like the snowmobile. Snowmobile, what people register, the snowmobiles wants to use the trails, so the register is a kickback from the state on snowmobile registration, and that goes to the snowmobile. And we maintain over sixty miles of trails in Belgrade, which benefit more of the snowmobiles. That's a, that's been in place for a long time. That's just an example of that. Really, there's no monies coming from taxpayers indirectly, because, because, money, this town money. But on the other hand, hikers, cross the streets, and old shoes, and people that own these properties benefit from the trails being improved, it is a benefit. I'm just giving you that aspect of it, because of the snowmobiles, and that's been in place for a long time. And it'll be the same way with vote registration dollars. The people, people on the water benefit more from it, and people who use the water benefit more from it than anybody else in town. So I think it would be a good, I'm in favor of that type of, of...
Barrett?
Just a question, very interesting question. Would groups such as a snowmobile, that have this privilege for all these years have to re-petition again? Would you, was it a forever, how did they set up a forever article and set up this situation?
Yeah, it was a forever one.
So they knew where this started and that, with that force.
You know, I think, is there anything up for a good form? Couldn't we set an amount that they could get, and that's it? Why?
Well, if it's a petition, I don't think you can. They can petition for whatever they want. I mean, they can petition for a million dollars, they're probably not going to get it.
But that's not the case, I mean, like what you just said.
I think, yeah, that, that's an interesting setup, I think.
You couldn't do it that way, I mean...
I mean, what's the question?
Well, I'm wondering if we could set a limit of how much somebody could get.
I, I, if it's a petition process, I don't think so. I, I, in fact, I'll say no.
Yeah, because you can't tell them to...
So that your deal wouldn't work then?
Well, that's, that was an issue that I was going to raise, is even if someone could come in with a petition regardless, another petition, and it's true, I would know that.
You're welcome. I think we're back to, to everybody, I hope that...
Well, that's what I'm hearing.
You just said the date.
Yeah, I think you did. And I think it's, it's not a problem to set it at the end of November in any year, because if they're petitioning, November seventh is election day, is the day when most of them will get their signatures. So that's why I do, after November, I push the department heads to get theirs early so that we can monetize the work.
Mr. Barrett?
I'm going to motion on this, that, uh, policy would be that all groups wanting to, uh, get town money, have to submit the proper petition by, I don't know, thirty percent?
The, the last business phase.
The first, next day is too late. First next day.
Let me stand.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it.
Listen, I just had one comment.
Discussion?
Yes. Again, when you get down to a particular, the Woodsons out of Woodwork, all groups, you know, you could have the Food Pantry.
The Food Pantry has a, has a multi-year...
It's a, it's a, it's a, I think a kind, it's an agreement that you guys require them to sign.
Yeah, well, it's voted on every year.
Yes, voted on, but it's an agreement. The, uh, the agreement is, uh...
As long as we don't put them in a position by using this language, that they have to go on petition, and basically have to, on that problem.
Well, you must have had, this must not be the year that was in, so it must be coming up next year.
I think it's a three-year or five-year.
Yeah, the agreement's a three-year agreement.
Next year, maybe.
So when their agreement is up, does that mean that they have to petition?
No, but we still, we still have the right to petition. No, we still, we still have the right to do it ourselves.
It's, it's a town, it's a joint venture. You're serving both the town of Belgrade and the town of Lawrence. So I, I mean, I don't think it necessarily falls under what we're trying to do by these other groups.
And the system still has the right to go with its own waters. So if we wanna put them on the water, we can put them on the water.
That's true too.
Yeah.
On what it doesn't do or something. It's just like what you're saying again, if we wanna do quiet, we can still do the, do the.
Right.
No, that's good. No, 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 no. I just don't want, I, I just think the petition process is something that people have, and that just slows down a lot of people.
Any more discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor? Okay, fire department, lots of fun. From the capital reserve for our lean-to. And I, if I take it, that's the parties?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah, a little history of that.
You wanna explain a little bit? You, you came, you came in last year, and I believe we budgeted twenty thousand for.
Yeah, and I got a brew by the town, got put into the budget, didn't get started from contractor purposes. And I was told by the end of the year, if it didn't get started, that's the money that used to pay down the fire truck, which eventually paid off the fire trucks. Or on to doing it again. I think I mentioned it back then when that happened. I can't remember the exact time I was in here. That I would be coming back to you to get that out of capital reserve if we could. And you said to come back, so here I am. Originally, we had decided, we talked about doing a full barn out behind in the parking lot. When we did the parking area, we had it designed for a lean-to off the side. Talking to some contractors, power-wise, all the aspect of that, it would be a lot easier if we went back to the lean-to off the side. So the email I sent out from one of the contractors for a price, it was eighteen to do it. The only thing we had talked about with the fire department, now putting that on that north side, is we might wanna somehow just close in two of the sides because of blowing snow and stuff like that, you're gonna be having issues with. We wanna put a trailer underneath there and a brush truck. Purpose of going down the road with ice on top, we try to keep it cleaned off, the ice coming flying off, getting vehicles and stuff like that, I think it's a hazard. He had told me, I don't have the email in front of me, but was it?
You want to?
Another three to
Three to five.
Three to five to put it in there, so I was asking for twenty-three. Hammond, I didn't get an answer back today, but I think they're gonna do something. I don't know the exact amount.
Twenty-three what?
Twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand.
And that's labor, material setting, doing those screw-in anchors down the side. And we're gonna lose a little bit of parking, but not a lot. And then we'll be able to back the trailer and the brush truck right down the side of the station. We'll be able to get power out there and everything will be undercover.
Does this have any, Dave?
Anything?
About ten thousand.
Yeah. Actually.
Yeah, that's a, yeah.
Actually, the, actually, the ten thousand limit that was voted on by the board a while back was never put into kind of a continuous article for ours. So right now.
Do it quick.
Right. I mean.
I was planning on putting that in as a warrant article this year, for a, it's still changing by fifteen hundred.
Right, no, it's waiting.
Right now, we don't have an article that restricts.
And he's also said, the one now is G and L contracting, and he said, you know, if it comes in less, that's what it will be. And I'm hoping Hammond's is gonna come through on, so the whole package will be less.
So twenty-three will get you where you need to be?
Right. If it comes in less, then.
I'm not getting one.
We have, and if you wanna know amounts, I, I think we're like one hundred and fifty or so in the capital reserve.
Yeah.
But the.
You're one.
We're one.
Yeah.
That's right.
I was gonna second it, that we give the fire department between three thousand and lead to up to. Is there any more discussion? Up to twenty thousand?
Twenty-three, yeah.
Up to twenty-three thousand?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
True, that was a lot easier than the first one you had to discuss.
When you win, don't talk.
I know, I'm sorry. I was just gonna tell you how much money we had in capital reserve. Oh, by the way, you gotta raise another ten grand.
How you just set meetings and thunk bill with Tommy?
I know. Well, my first took over, he's like, you gotta get up, Tommy, tell me, you gotta get up. I'm like, they got the question, I'm sure they're gonna ask.
That's true.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming. We have an appointment to make. Valencia Schuber wants to be appointed to the, Parks, the Board of Parks and Rec.
I'll second it.
Move the second?
We have always asked that the person applying be here.
She couldn't help being here tonight. Well, this person.
She's been here many, yeah. The reason was, I understood, that we didn't, if we didn't know him, we would be gonna. Valencia's been here many, many, many times. Will you second it?
I don't know, it's not a different Valencia.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Kind of stuff like that.
True. We have policy repeaters, Parks and Rec policy is rescheduled. Benny?
Well, on this policy, the, we got, we got an email from the Rec Committee Chair who said he has no additional changes. But speaking earlier to Mike, Mike had some changes, because there are some organizations that we didn't pick up that no longer are called the same as they are here. Like Belgrade Lakes Incorporated, Belgrade Lions Club no longer is in existence. So I suggest that what I do is take these back, take the, and just rewrite this thing and, and bring it back to.
Yeah, sit down and show you what it is.
Exactly. Yeah, that's the same way with me. And similarly with the next, the roles and responsibilities. There's a number of changes that they made, but I think if any of you had comments, it would, it would be probably behooves in terms of the time to essentially provide any significant comments or log it or edit, you know, edits, administrative edits, then we can bring it back with final approval.
Rainbow for everybody?
Yeah.
Do you want it?
Yep, I'll second it.
It's stapled. Second table, all those in favor? Excuse me, Mike, do you have something to say?
Oh, boy.
He was getting scared.
Thank you, Matt.
If I may, last week we approved the alcohol policy. There was one thing that was pointed out that I figured I should bring up to your attention. It had, it had a data there when the insurance policy was reviewed to make sure it didn't impact the, our insurance cover. I talked to MMA, they asked for some tiny wording change, basically, it's, it's nothing seriously protected. So with that, I changed it. It basically says, as of October twenty seventeen, MMA Risk Management Services stated that the town is covered for its own exposure or their facilities through their use, through its current policy and will not increase, and no increase to the town premium will occur providing the following conditions and that. So, we need those to be.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public climate use of municipal property and facilities. And again, Danny, I'll turn it over to you.
Hold on a second. This, this policy came about, if you recall, there was some significant discussion surrounding who should use town-owned property and how, how you use it in terms of gathering votes or, you know, trying to get public opinion. It was a First Amendment's issue. There were group, two groups that were arguing for a particular position at, at the time. And we had no policy on who should, if there's only room for one group, who should get that to be able to use a particular site for their own First Amendment rights or who, who, and who could, so if there wasn't enough room for both. So we put this policy together that essentially allows people to let us, requires them to let us know within twenty-four hours when they're gonna hold it. So if they're gonna hold it at Hayden Park or the transfer station or whatever, we can assess whether or not we've got room and we'll authorize them to use it. So this, this policy, I would, I did recommend any changes. It was pretty much the same as before. We had our attorney at the time back in two thousand nine or ten look at it, and I don't think there's any need to change it, but that's.
I don't think it was none to walk through in the transfer station.
Right.
Get, send out a petition, son. You're gonna get permission.
You have to, yes.
You just have to let the town.
Let the town, no, you don't get permission.
If I wanted, what they can just do.
Now, if there's two.
No, but I'm just saying, if I wanted, what they would do. I would have to beg the town.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Because.
Unless you're interfering, unless you're interfering with the operation up there.
That was, I'm just, I'm just saying, that was the issue.
He's gonna run, he'll try and.
Just hang it.
No, I just don't wanna get us into a situation where somebody comes out of the woodwork and ensures us because we violated their rights being in that public property to get a volume of place. I'm just pointing out.
No, no, you're right. And that was the reason why we put the policy into effect. It allows us to ensure that two or three groups are trying to go up there to gather the same, and interfere with the operations and stuff. That's what it's about.
What is it?
I'm just gonna say, you've got a lot of policies they put in when I wasn't on board. My team's not on any of these. They're all done the same year too.
Howard?
Talking about the transfer station, is the, the area outside the transfer station gate? That, that area, are you controlling that area?
It's all public property. It's just town property, yeah. So if you're interfering with the access to the transfer station, how do you?
I don't think anybody's controlling, we just, you can go up there.
Well, but they, we've had, we've had numerous discussions and situations with different groups parking around in different areas of the transfer station. And my understanding is that they're now saying nothing can happen by the hopper, by the recycle area, nothing can happen anywhere except in that area outside the gate.
Well, I don't know, I haven't heard, I haven't heard that. But it's, it's, the, the policy is meant to ensure you don't interfere with the operation, but people still get the first amendment.
Barrett?
I've gotta say this, that if you're interfering with the operation, you're parking your car in the hopper so people can't get the, throw the trash in. That's interfering.
Or it can't, or give you the.
Like you're standing, you're standing around somewhere, or people are in line or something. Without your car, just standing there, that might be acceptable, possibly.
It wasn't, it wasn't last year, according to town.
Well, the policy hopefully will clarify.
Well, that's what this does.
Jack?
Yeah, are those positions assigned to groups or multiple groups in advance? Who does the assignment? Because you, you know, going up there on a Saturday morning in the middle of summer or late spring or early fall, there's quite a mess up there now without any groups.
Yeah. What it says is here, therefore, anyone that intends to engage in these protected activities, First Amendment activities on municipal property must adhere to the following guidelines. Unless a facility used for rental agreement has been signed. No commercial solicitation of any kind is allowed. Advise the town office a minimum of twenty-four hours in advance of the activity. Use will be on a first-come, first-served basis and will depend on the amount of space available. Confining activity only to the area designated by the town manager and/or his designee. Adhere to the instructions of town manager or his or her designee if any are given. Note, and then there's limited instructions may be necessary to minimize its impact on the activity of the municipal operations. That's the kind of thing we're talking about. Because sound systems and/or loudspeaker speakers may create safety problems or interfere with the proper contact of municipal operations, use of such must be pre-approved by the town manager. The activity will not be allowed to occur, the activity will allow, be allowed to occur only during normal operating hours of the municipal facility. In otherwise, in other words, people won't be able to say, I wanna use the transfer station if we're not operating. Right? Because it's closed and there won't be any others supervised, right? Any activity must be conducted in accordance with the applicable state or federal law. Fail to adhere to these guidelines will result in immediate denial of use and premises. All right? Appeals must be directed at town manager for resolutions. Unresolved appeals may be put to the next board of selection, to the board of selection.
If I may, I, I'm just thinking that some decisions may have to be made on the spot.
Yeah.
And I wonder whether the town manager or his or her designee would be appropriate language.
Well, otherwise, what, what would you do?
Uh, I don't know.
If I make a bad decision, if I make a bad decision, right?
I said, oh, does it?
They can, they can appeal to the board. Or if my designee makes a bad decision, they can appeal.
There's a designee in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, fine. I missed it.
Mr. Barrett?
On the list on the list of air supplies, you've left out the salmon sauce. Was that delivered?
It wasn't in existence at this time.
At this time? Not tonight?
No, at the time of this.
Oh, we're gonna be adopting it, you're gonna hire it.
Any more comments, gentlemen? A motion to accept it?
Yeah.
In second?
Second.
Come on, guys, let's pick it up here. Tell you in second if we accept this policy. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Return check policy, again, I will refer.
Yeah, as you know, we have a return check policy. It's those twenty-five dollars. We're recommending that it be increased to thirty-five because it takes sometimes a fairly significant time to track these things down and issue a payment.
Are you getting a lot of them?
Not as, well, I can't tell you because I don't really, I haven't heard about many. But do you get a lot of return checks, you know, from how many? I know in fact, in fact.
Season, we had a couple.
But they're not huge numbers.
Barrett?
If you use a credit card, I understand you have to get a surcharge, isn't that right?
It's required by state law that you cover, in other words, the use of a credit card costs money and is part of a credit card agency, a bank or market. So because it costs money, if you don't charge that fee, taxpayers who don't use credit cards will be subsidizing those who do. So the state requires that no taxpayer money is subsidizing someone else's credit card.
So you'd have to pay the thirty-five dollars plus that surcharge, plus the fee itself, the amount.
No, the thirty-five, this is just a check.
Just for checks, not for credit cards. It says, can, well, they recovered by providing the town cash or credit card equivalent.
Yep.
The credit card be denied right off the bat, correct? You thought we should run it through?
We run it, no, 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 he's, he's talking about the twenty-five dollar or the thirty-five dollar fee. You can pay it in cash. Or you can pay it by credit card, plus the fee, but you can't pay it by check because you've proven that your check was bad. It's just a.
Problem, but I just wanna be sure that's what you're saying.
Yes.
I just had a question. So is the document that you are referring to right now the one that's posted on the municipal town's municipal website? Or is this the updated suggested change?
No, this is the one, the policy on the website, I, I didn't even check the website, so. But this is the, the existing policy for check.
The one on the website is two thousand eight?
This one is two thousand ten. So that one needs to be changed on the website.
Fewer updated.
This is June first, two thousand ten.
Okay, thank you.
So we need to get that just.
So the only change is the thirty.
Yeah, so we wanna get thirty bucks.
I'm gonna get a check. I think we should have one check, then one bad check, and then we're done. It costs us money, the procedures. If anybody that comes in and gives us a bad check, you get a second shot at it, to get us again.
That's, that's, you're, I mean, that's unusual, but just saying.
I just think that.
Yes.
Sometimes a check bounces and you just think you have the money and stuff, so that was written, written that way.
Yeah, money gets there. It's not three strikes, it's two.
Yeah. Maybe strike two in the row.
Yeah. Sometimes it's not necessarily your fault, it's, it could be a bank's.
And actually, we've had people that never did pay the check, and we have warrants out. Should they get stopped for some other issue? Yeah, all right.
But for a motion to accept this?
I'll be it.
Second. Any more discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor? Abatements, we have several abates.
Move the second, so we defer. I'll second it.
Move the second, we accept the first one. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor? And the second one? There's one in here that I have a real pride in.
Me too. And I think that, I think that's the second one. But I wasn't gonna say.
I'm gonna extend. The thing I wanna point out is instead of paying the three hundred and twenty-six dollars, I'm gonna have to pay the four thousand three hundred eighty-one. The thing I want to point out is instead of paying the $326, I'm gonna have to pay the $4,381. So you be the judge.
I made a motion when you said that.
Real quick, anyways, you sit out there.
Okay, move the second, we accept the second, make it all those in favor?
Thank you, man.
We have a four and one abstaining. Are you abstaining?
And the town, as I tell every taxpayer that comes in.
Okay, RSU 18 forum, this is a discussion, and I'll let Mr. Ketschel start.
As you remember, both the last, at the last two meetings, there were discussions of the petition that folks had put together to look at withdrawing from the RSU 18. At the first meeting, there was a discussion, well, isn't the town going to put on some informational forums? And what I had indicated at that meeting, and I don't think anyone felt there was any problem with it, was that those who were in favor of looking into withdrawal, and those opposed to looking into withdrawal should be going out and educating the public. That's pretty much how it stood. And then at the last meeting, there was this issue about, well, look at, maybe we should. Because it didn't seem like anyone was fully a public informational meeting, maybe we should do it. And the board voted to essentially direct me to set up a public information meeting. So you've seen the emails that I put out. And at the last email, I had asked that I needed people from both sides so we could arrange for the meeting. So we could say, who's gonna do what, how it's gonna be set up, and agree to a moderator and all of that. I got one email back that said, essentially, I'll do whatever I can to help. But that was from the side I wanted to look into withdrawing. No other emails have come from the other, from anyone else, other than a suggestion that we not use, we use the legal women voters as the moderators. We had chosen a moderator, although there had been some agreement outside that meeting. But nothing else has happened. I cannot really, I find it difficult. I don't know how to set up a meeting when I don't get the people together so we can talk about setting a meeting up. You had read the one email from Mr. Doreng, who suggested that maybe there is a need to hold this meeting, and why, there's a lot of questioning about that. And I tried to respond as I understood the board intended. So the question, I mean, the reason for the discussion is, how do you want, do you want me to proceed and just set up? Those who come, come, and those who don't? I mean, I don't know how they can set up something that's deemed to be fair and equitable if only one side comes.
Plus DOE will have.
And DOE, who I thought would be the arbiter of truth, so to speak, in terms of putting the numbers up there. I thought that they would be able to come, but they do not participate in these meetings. I did talk to the former commissioner of the DOE that I know, who's very, very much involved and understands all of the issues. Asked him if he could come, but he has a health issue and he cannot. He can help people if they want to go to look at the numbers, if they have numbers that they want to look at, but that's pretty much all I can do. So I don't know where to go for, other than to say that, you know, the superintendent should have the numbers, but there are some people who may not, you know, he may be considered biased, although, you know, he shouldn't be. He may be. So there is that whole kind of commitment.
Mr. Barry?
It seems to me this is the only intent, is to be of service to the people. And I had the impression, listening to the folks up here that night, that they thought it was a personal, a good idea. Both sides, not necessarily recognizing one position or another. But there's nobody interested in it now. I think we may be wasting our time, and wasting the time of the moderator, whoever that may come out to be, and the use of the hall, and whatever.
What I could do, if you wanted, was I could put out another email saying, look, if less I hear from interested parties from either position, by Friday, then my direction is to not proceed.
Bernie?
You said you're gonna have interested parties from both sides?
I don't have to, no. I'm just saying, I don't know how to say.
Well, you don't have interested parties.
Oh, no, I get that. No, I understand.
That would be so. Because I think it's very important that those people that you should have clearly standing there. First off, the public meeting that we had, we were like to, on a couple occasions. Publicly liked to, and I wasn't gonna address it then, but addressing it now. We had a person, Kyle, sat here. It's on our report. He sat there and explained about having two of Sydney and Belgrade Central. Two places where they serve meals. And by consolidating that, it would be a savings. And then he referenced the fact that Jan Dory, so it's gonna be a savings. So he was referencing consolidation. Then he sits here and then he denies he ever said anything like that. That's misleading. Secondly, we have a gentleman from down on the coast who basically contradicts what Damon said. It was a tax increase down there. He was referencing their tax and everything else. There's been no tax increases. It was clearly stated that somebody muttered taxes had gone up. Well, in fact, apparently, and I haven't gone and checked that, but apparently, that statement was not accurate. There's a lot of pluses that, other than possibly saving, there are a lot of things that came out. We had a two and a half hour meeting with a gentleman from Northport who had been involved from Hitco in their first initial process. And I'm just sharing this with the board, just so you can kind of be on board. Spent two and a half hours with this gentleman. He basically, they started out whether it's gonna be a savings tax dollars. Because it was spending like cops, they were caught like cops. They had valuable property. They were spending more average per child than anybody else in the district. So that was the initial thing. But once they got into it, they realized that it didn't matter, even if it cost them more. The benefit of having local control. And having to say, the local school, preserving the local school, because they were spending in the same situation as if they were gonna close it out. Now, that they were being controlled by the local school. And in the process of doing that, they also expanded their curriculum, which included different, Latin, Latin long, which they felt was a real benefit. And that, all the dollars, even if they spent the same amount of dollars per child, was going, their tax dollars were going for benefit of their children. They were in control. And you know, when you listen to that, I just would like to have the opportunity to explain it to the voters of this town. But first off, yes, looking at withdrawing from RSU 18 is what it says. It's looking at withdrawing from RSU 18. But that doesn't mean, if that was to occur, that we would still, we would still have them as our primary place to send our children. So it's not like we're leaving RSU 18. We would then have our own school board, which we could have a vote and control locally as to how our local kids would be taught. And we had school choice, which again, as I want to know, Kyle said, there'll be no school choice, won't be one, and you know that? That's what exactly Northport is for, state means city, you can have school choice. Now, this is from the people that have already gone down that road. I would like to point out, I was involved in the other meeting, committee, and information was not forthcoming. And when it came, it was not accurate, and it was very misleading. And to me, I think the people in this town need to know that we, in my opinion, are getting screwed big time. You go up there, unlike a lot of people on this board, I spent a lot of time up there. We had some special, let me know, a big crew from Belgrade up there. They shit all over us. Every time you make a motion, it got defeated. You know, all we wanted to do was keep the budget as it was. And they stuck it right to us, you know, they had all the money, they called people back to the tour. All this stuff went on, and then I got to see it for a game, so then it's like, oh, you need to go and talk to us. Now, there's no time anymore up there. You go up there, you plead with them, Belgrade, it impacts us big time. It's a 3% increase, and their budget basically turns into a 9% increase here. It's only gonna get worse, this time, I believe. So I just think it's very important for the people to have maybe a clearer view of maybe looking at what is the potential. If you have children, and you want your children to go to Miranda Cook, and you've got school choice, and we're gonna pay $10,000, it's $10,000 for $300, which state sets that number. We say, oh, no, we take that number, and we're gonna set it for it. And again, Northport, it was very interesting, the information that came from Northport. And the extra things that they now provide for their, they've expanded their school with LP through eight because it was such a benefit. And it voted 98%. They voted to do this, it was a separate article. They built a $47,000 greenhouse, so they could teach their children things about growing and things like that. A separate article, that again passed on the news. So that's not the school budget. This is extra curricula that they want to give to their children. And the taxpayer, when people start throwing out, oh, you don't give a shit about our education. Don't think for me, folks, I do care. And I just, after sitting here on this board for seven years, and I haven't done much with RSU 18 for a couple years, only because I'm not wasting my time. And it's just raised the depth. And to me, I think that the town should be informed as much as they can about it. And Northport is one that has recently done it, and the gentleman, I believe, I mean, I guarantee that he would be here, he said he would come. And he is full of absolute information that they did, he has no skin in the game to us. And so that's just, that's why I think it's very important to have this public here. Really public meeting, yeah.
Go ahead, Danny.
This is, the only caution I give you, I guess it's a caution, because I think I have to, is that if the talent holds it, and only one side comes, even though you invite the other side, it might seem, at least from my perspective, it might seem as imbalanced or biased approach. But that doesn't mean you quit holding public information meeting as the one group. I'm just looking, I hear everything you say, but there's probably gonna be a little bit more stuff. But I just am trying to make sure, what I thought we were trying to do, and I believe we should do, is get both sides together, have them air their positions. Have a, you know, an arbiter over here that says, well, what you're saying now is true or not true, but here's the real numbers. But we can't get that arbiter. I don't know who to get. So then it just, it becomes the two groups presenting their information. It's fine too, but if you only get one group, then it's, you know, it's one side, so.
You know, I was telling Dennis the other day, I was off to a ride, and I came across Sebago's doing the same thing right now. If you go on their webpage, and they have every meeting that they've had, it says Sebago Withdrawal from 61, I think is it. There's every meeting they had, the minutes in there, telling you what they've done. I mean, their meetings didn't last more than an hour. And it looks like to me the superintendent's working with them, from what I read in there. And it's not, our insight is just working, you know, the wheel is already built. Just got to plug the numbers in. So I think it's a, there's a lot of districts doing it, a lot of towns. So it doesn't anything new.
But the question though is, how do you want me to proceed? I mean, I can proceed whatever way you want. You know, I mean, that's up to you.
I would just put that out so people could read that and see what's going on, just to see, it isn't such a big matter as I think what people want me to do.
Well, first of all, my opinion on the forum is to invite a collaborator as a moderator. Someone who can hear both sides and then, and then put something together that works for all parties. But I just wanted to comment quickly about the common course and the argument, I think, for me, my perspective, just quickly, is that we all sort of agree on healthcare. If I can't afford healthcare, and I get an arm cut off, and I'm bleeding to death, we could go to this hospital and get care to save my life, whether I have insurance or not. I think we all sort of agree to form certain basic minimum operations for healthcare. And so we all sort of also grow to expect a certain minimum level of performance or standard for students, educational expectations, national standards of student performance upon graduation. And so if all of the towns who cost share in RSU 18 agree to, you know, the certain expectations of performance output from graduating students, I'm not sure why there's no equity in the cost sharing between the towns.
That's a whole different subject. Whole different subject. I'm sorry, it is. It's a different subject, whether there's gonna be equity or not. How the towns treat each other, that's questioned tonight. Is where do we want Danny to go from where we're at right now, which is we have one side that said they'll be there. The other side, nobody stepped forward.
Well, that's the fundamental argument I brought into here.
So, Howard? I get the minutes, I get the agendas for the select board meetings on a regular basis. Can we do that? Arnie?
We better stop doing that right now.
That was the only reason that I knew that the official quote-unquote "public" meeting dealing with the petition was held a month ago, whenever it was. What I would hope, and I thought was expressed here by the board earlier, is that we would have a more robust advertising campaign and get the word out more, and try to get more people who are there. I can't force somebody to come who doesn't want to come. I don't want to force somebody to come who doesn't want to come. There are some of us who would like to share with the town the information that we are aware of, and that brought us to the point of having a petition created. We had talked about having a meeting, and then you folks said you were gonna do it, and so we backed off. And it's gonna be very disappointing if that doesn't take place. And from a very selfish standpoint, one of the things I've talked about ever since we've talked about having another meeting, is that I have a commitment to be out of state for a period of time in the next, you know, in the middle of October. Danny put out a notice, I didn't send you back an email, Danny. I think I expressed to you personally when I was here, that I was willing to do something, willing to work on doing the meeting. So I think there's been more than one person respond to your request for information.
No, my point was that I'm not getting.
And if whoever, from whatever position, doesn't want to be involved or be active with it, that's fine. What we're trying to do is get information out to the people. I think, you know, you and Gary both know that, you know, there's another huge significant change that's been made in RSU 18 that's gonna affect Belgrade big time. And that is the fact that debt service is now no longer shared equally. It's now gonna be thrown on, heavier on our back, those kinds of things. I guarantee you that if you walked to the streets of Belgrade and talked to local residents, I guarantee you that if you walked to the streets of Belgrade and talked to local residents, and asked them whether or not we are going to be responsible for more debt service than every other town going forward, they would not have any idea what you're talking about. We need to get people informed.
We don't have a problem with that. We do not have a problem with it.
I just would like to say, you can be assured what's your inside and really, where there's no understanding. They will be here, and you know, when you say, it may look like one way about something, but they're not here. Depending on many of the people who are in the long way. And it might be like my face. I know what they're saying, you know, it's false statements of the game. As a person representing the town of Belgrade, which what I don't understand is, you have an organization that should just be bubbling with joy to work with us, to just work with us. And it just doesn't.
The point is, there's no organization that I know to go to.
Yeah, that's, my point.
Yeah, Arnie.
Was to Danny was earlier, was that, you know, there's specific people like yourself, or, like yourself, Howard, Danny, and you know, a number of other people who have, you know, put forward, you know, have done the legwork and so forth to do this petition. And, you know, have strong feelings about it, as they should, and are knowledgeable about it. But on the other side, I mean, there really isn't like a group of people that are, I mean, I guess there is a loose group of people, but there's no specific people like there are that came forward and really did this petition. So, you know, like, it would be simple for Danny to call up, you know, several people in Belgrade to be, to represent the pro side of the petition.
He's already done that.
He's already done that. And, but I don't know, there just isn't like a ready group of people from the other side to represent the other side. My point is that, you know, like to hear Ernie talk, you know, he certainly has lots of information. And I would respond to your email and say, sure, I'd be glad to help, but I don't have any knowledge. I mean, I have lots of questions, and I'd love to go to an event like this to, you know, enunciate my questions, and maybe get some answers, you know, from, from people who have some more information than I do. So, and if it turns out that that's what this becomes, the more of a question-and-answer session, where citizens like myself, who aren't really sure where they stand on yes or no, could get their questions answered.
I think that's exactly what I had in mind.
If that can be articulated to the, you know, to the town, then it'd be certainly a worthwhile event. But you could, you know, and you have to set up chairs, but I don't know how else that could happen.
I'm not, I'm not saying anything pro. You want me to set up a meeting, I'll set up a meeting. I'm pointing out some difficulties that I'm running into. In terms of, what I understood was an informational meeting, so people could get answers from both sides, and we could try to get someone there to basically be the truth there, right? Maybe, you know, I mean, that was the point, I was going to invite RSU, the board members that we have on the school board, and I was going to invite DOE, DOE declined, couldn't get someone there. So, now we got, you know, there are people will show, but if no one is willing to work with me to say, well, how do you want to handle this? How do you want to set it up and all of that? I certainly have, as Ernie indicated, we're certainly trying to get one side there. The other side may show up, they may not. I just don't know how to then set it up. Do we have just questions and answers, or do we have whoever shows up? What do we do? I mean, that's, really, I'm putting to you a difficulty I have.
Let me get to that first.
Just a question, is there an active PTA in town?
There is.
And if so, wouldn't they be a logical point to go to, to solicit interest in a meeting like this?
Well, I sent this email out to, I'm sure, people that were on that PTA, I believe.
PTO.
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 TTO, PTO.
Sorry. I'm trying to get as many people as I knew that were sent out to.
I would think that that would be where direct citizen interest would be focused.
Arnie?
I guess I just look at point L. And I think, I think you might have been on the board already, Mike was on the board. And we had a first, pretty good discussion, it was just from a gender. In a room at the center, there was all people from RSU eighteen. It was having any locals there, and it was all that side of it. And we was just looking at, putting something, actually, we're going to look to find out what it was going to cost us to go through the process and everything else. And there was all kinds of opposition in that room. So it wasn't like they had to be, make a commitment to be there. They will be there in force, there was absolutely no question about that. In my view, and I would say, I'm willing to bet a thousand dollars.
The idea was to have an informational meeting. If I might, an informational meeting where both sides express their views on it. And then about an hour of questions from the audience, just come to each side, and have sort of an arbiter group there that could come up, DOE specifically. That was the idea. And if it's unstructured to the point where people just show up, one side gives their views, the other side says, no, that's not true, and everybody goes away, it's not much of an informational meeting. Howard?
Yeah, I think the idea of you being the moderator, officiator, whatever you want to call it, would be good. And I would ask that, basically, if, this business of the DOE being an arbiter, the DOE can be, if they were willing to come. They could answer questions relative to process. To, you know, when I came to this, when I came to the public meeting a month ago, I didn't have facts and figures with me. But I would expect that in a meeting like that we're planning here, one of the things that would be put out for information to people is if you're coming with specific concerns or specific points, be able to substantiate them. In other words, if, if, if you're the moderator, and I just say, well, you know, X, Y, Z, and somebody says, no, 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 I don't think that's right. Your point would be, okay, where are your facts to back up X, Y, Z? Rather than having, just getting into a shouting match. And, you know, some of it is rumor, some of it's misinformation. You know, I've been trying to gather some numbers together, just share one thing with you. I contacted Belgrade, and I said to Melanie, how much was planned? How much was the number that was used when we set up the mill rate to raise taxes to pay the education budget for RSU eighteen this year? And she gave me back a number. Great. I went to Carl, and I said, please tell me how much each town pays in total, including everything. Do you know that the number that he gave me for Belgrade, and the number that Melanie gave me for Belgrade, or a hundred thousand dollars off?
Maybe there's a reason for that, I think.
Okay. And if that, and if that kind of a statement is made, and there is a reason for it, then fine, let's hear what it is.
Well, the whole idea of the meeting would be to get that sort of thing out. But we still have to give Danny some guidance here on where we wanted to go. So I'm looking for some board interaction here. Mr. Better?
Then if we just advertise that we have a meeting to discuss pros and cons, and not invite anybody in particular, we just, what comes, comes. And if they happen to go, be on one side, so be it. We just.
Anybody else?
Are we doing this as a board, or are we doing this as individuals?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a question that deserves.
My personal opinion, I think we ought to do it as individuals.
I do too, I agree with that.
Just, I don't think, because that's tied in one way or the other.
All I think we should do is facilitate.
Right.
If we can get the groups to come in and give out information to the people of Belgrade, that would make me extremely happy.
And how are you?
I dance, I get up on the table and dance.
Oh, geez.
I would. Get you a thousand dollars, Ernie.
Go ahead, Ernie.
I just, I'm just, and again, I try to do my research. And I throw some things off here. I've got it from a reliable source. Nothing's ever perfectly reliable. I don't give a who, 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 I don't prove myself. We all make mistakes, and we all can be misled by different numbers or people. So, but the thing is, I think the people in town need to be aware, like Howard just says. You know, if they do the seventy million dollar project, we're going to get tagged with a large portion of that. I think people ought to be aware of that, what we might be facing. And if they are going to do a consolidation, and more than likely, and there's no guarantee, but Belgrade Central is going to be on. And how many people in this town know that? And you know, when that decision is made, it's too late if we haven't gone through that process and already had to get out. So I'm just saying, these are things I just think it would be good to share with the people. So if they are aware, you can just get them here, and just say, hey, this is, this is some of the things that has been, that have been looked at. And hopefully, the gentleman from Northport can be here, and he can definitely verify some things that go on.
To Howard's point, even he should be able to substantiate what he's saying, otherwise it's just hearsay.
What do we want Danny to do?
I think you just said.
I just have, I have just three things, just real quick. So I wanted to let you know I can volunteer, I'd be glad to volunteer to help set it up. And if you wanted to distribute some labor or advertising, I can help out. And then the DOE Commissioner, Robert Hass, Mr. Hass, is succeeding like disjardined, and a number of people who have commissioners who've not been really able to touch down at DOE for the past five years. So they've been basically running without a commission. And Robert Hass has done more in the past six months than they've done in the past six years with that. So he's very engaged, very active. So maybe you can put a feeler out to him, or somebody can put a feeler out to him, because he's very, very engaged in wanting students to, you know, people, kids to work. And then MDOE also has, I don't know if you're probably all aware of this, but there's a really valuable data warehouse on their website that's public facing, and you can access that. So a lot of this information, data, that you could probably query that all on your own free will and accord right on the website, in preparation for questions and that kind of thing.
Danny? Yeah, all that's true. What do you want me to do? Yeah, that's the question. Do you want to set up a meeting? Invite those people to come, have the tables up in the front?
You already got some legwork with the dates. I would say, pick one of those dates, and just send an email out saying, we have this meeting, we're going to have it at the center, I assume.
Yeah.
Or, you know, spacewalk. And it'll be, you know, it'll be an informational meeting. And it will, you know, bring your questions, and hopefully, you'll get your answers. You know, I mean, if you have questions, if you're unsure, you know, however, however you want to, you want to couch it, and just, and just do it, you know? Because I mean, we can analyze and how we were doing, and which experts we're going to have, and all this kind of stuff, and we just don't, you know, that would take forever, and it just.
So what, I guess I'm hearing that you might want me to do is to establish a, you know, put out the information that there's, it'll be a meeting to discuss the upcoming petition, the upcoming referendum on RSU eighteen. And come and hear whoever comes and shows up. Is that, is that, is that what you want me to say? I mean, essentially, there may be people from either side there, there may not, but come and ask questions.
If you've got something to say now, if you've got questions.
It's a public discussion, but who's going to, who's going to moderate it? League of Women Voters. Why? Because they are completely outside the community.
He's somebody without a question of race.
There is no way they can be shown to be on either side. If I can, let's think through this a little bit, because I'm really still trying to, I'm spitting. So we advertise this, anyone that wants to argue for it, it's just people come to a room. No setup where there's a pro or, just people come to the room. And you have a moderator. I don't say it's Anthony. So Anthony's moderating the meeting, and someone asks a question. So Anthony says, Anthony says, okay, who wants to answer that question? Anyone?
Let Ernie answer the question.
I'm sure somebody will raise their hand.
Well, they may very well be people that can raise their hand. I'm just trying to figure out how's that format work? If there's, if there's not a side that is arguing for investigating withdrawal, and a side that's arguing against investigating withdrawal, then what you're going to do is just open the question up to anyone that wants to. You're just going to have a public discussion on how the, on the two sides, as they go on, and moderator will try to keep people from leaking on each other and throttling.
Keep people in throttling.
I would announce that right at the beginning.
No leaking, no throttling. No throttling.
What are the guidelines that you use when you have the required quote-unquote "public" hearing over an issue like this?
What are the guidelines that you use?
Yeah, you didn't, you didn't bring in the League of Women Voters for that.
No, no. As a matter of fact, the big public hearings, like the school hearing, they bring in, who was the?
Richie Robinson?
No, 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 out of Brooklyn.
Oh, well, Bob Duffin.
No, he's a legislator, they bring him in. And he runs it, just, he just runs it down the line, and that's the way it goes.
Well, that's voting on the budget process. But what I'm saying is, this is, my concern with the League of Women Voters is putting this into a candidate's debate night forum, as opposed to the public information forum, which is what you do when you have anything going before. And you, as the chair of the board, moderate the discussion and the questions. And I would see it as that kind of a meeting, no different than that, you know, not, we didn't, we didn't have a public information meeting here where people came in and picked sides. We were just sharing information. And you moderated it, I thought, rather well. And why wouldn't we just do that on a larger scale?
You did, Howard.
But why wouldn't we just do that on a larger scale?
Well, I think, that could happen. But I think, here's the problem I see that I'm having too. When we hold a public hearing, which is basically a public informational meeting that we're required to hold, there's a question. The question is, whatever it is, like the petition question, that question. So people are focused on the question. This type of public informational meeting, as I see it, there, if you don't have sides, people come to hear about the referendum question, but who's, what's the issue? I mean, well, I'm for it, and here, who's going to talk to me about being for it? Or I'm against it? Who's going to talk? I mean, I just, I don't, I'll set it up. I just, I don't see it as being, you know, necessarily, I like to have some organization. I like to have pros, cons, or whatever. But we can set up this kind of general public informational meeting, and whoever moderates it, does the board want to sit there as the discussion group, or the lead group? Do you want to have an outside moderator? How do you want to run that?
I think the consensus was we didn't want it to be a sort of, some like board.
Well, I think the board is not necessarily all on one side on this anyway. I think, and maybe that's, maybe it's good or bad. But a moderator that does it can probably carry it through without a big problem. And it doesn't make a lot of difference to me, except it was expressed that they may want to.
except it was expressed that they may wanna get somebody from, that's completely independent, has no ties anywhere at all.
That doesn't have to be the League of Women Voters.
We don't do it for them.
Problem like that, nothing gets you, Gary. I don't mean this as personal, but if you're the moderator, it's gonna seem like the Board has a position. And we don't want that.
Jack?
When is the, when is the referendum question coming to the voters?
Whoever's on the number of votes.
Does there have to be a formal hearing for that referendum?
It's already been given.
It's been given?
Yep.
Okay.
The public hearing's been done. At the public hearing, there were several people that wanted to have some sort of an informational meeting for the people, for the voters. I think that's a great idea. I think the voters need to hear whatever sides there are. I think, and I think this group would be doing it injustice if we didn't do something. But I've watched Danny struggle away here over the last two weeks trying to get somebody interested from the group that obviously wants to keep Belgrade Central the way it is and stay booked into RSU-18. So the idea tonight was to try to give Danny some guidance on this. I think we're sitting at a public discussion. And, and I think the guidance is that we want him to invite everybody that he's got on his list, saying it's gonna be a public discussion. We'll have a moderator that, when people try to hit each other or something like that, tries to break it up. Is that where we're standing, gentlemen?
Yeah, we just need, we just need somebody to control who's talking and when they talk. And be able to shut them off.
If it gets out of control, stop meeting, it's done.
Yeah, well, that's all, that's all we need. I don't need anybody that's really, you know, hostile.
They lay their ground.
Because this is probably the longest board meeting I've had. I've done that since I began.
You know, the thing about this, and I wanna put this thing to bed, one way or the other. Either we do it or we don't do it. You know, we've been dubbin' with this now for a while.
On November seventh, it'll be put to bed.
I know, but, you know, we need to give everybody a fair shot at what's going on, because they don't know. You talk to people and they say, oh, that's not what's going on. Well, you know, we need to come set here. But I will tell you, if we get any more attitude like we had at the next meeting, I'm gonna make a couple of suggestions that, in a couple of three months, there's gonna be a couple openings up here. Come right up here, get your name on the board.
Okay. I will put together an announcement. Because essentially, we'll announce a time and a place. And the fact that it's an open forum, anyone can come, and they'll hear from people when questions are asked. Some people may stand up, some people not, but I won't say it that way. Essentially, it'll be a public discussion, open to any question or anyone answering those questions.
That's it, to me, is the best way to do it.
As far as a moderator?
Person that can keep the people on.
The time of the year, if you're going to a 3:00, 7:00?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I might not even show up.
I don't need no one at five o'clock here, because that probably can't make it.
No, we'll do seven to nine, or six to eight.
That's fine, seven to nine.
Can we establish a date?
Well, I have to look at the dates. I know I got an October nineteenth date, a November second date. I've got a couple of dates that, you want me to invite Carl, which I assumed Carl Barkley. You want the Board members invited. So I have to work, because he had given me a couple of dates too. So I will have that date developed by, I'll put this up like Friday. Tomorrow, I've got, I'll come in early to see if I can get the dates and make sure they're available.
What are you, you're gonna be on?
I'm going the night of the eleventh through, no longer than the twenty-third.
Well, we'll probably be after the twenty-third.
And I, and I may be back earlier than that, but I don't know yet.
I mean, you're, you've indicated, I'm interested in it, so we'll probably try and meet you schedule. So we'll try to work it in there sometimes. It'll be just that, and I don't know who the moderator will be.
Gary, you're not willing to do it?
Go to the League of Women's Voters to see if they'll do it. If you can't find anybody on earth to do it, I'll do it. But I think somebody completely outside, who doesn't know anything about the, you know, other than just keep order as they go along, get the answers. And we're onto the warrants.
Listen, we need a motion on that.
I just want a direction. On the warrant, please. These are. Warrant number one, nineteen, five hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, seventy-eight thousand. And second? Second, we accept it, all in a discussion, please.
Who's K. O. Sundas? Reimbursement for rental.
Who's this?
K. O. Sundas.
Was that the center or something?
I don't know, it says General Government, so I don't know. It's on page, lot four, first one, the end, so I'm at two. I'm sure.
I think it's Recreation, I think.
Says General Government.
Here it is, here. Reimbursed rental fee canceled.
They were gonna rent something, they canceled it.
I have a question.
What's the sixty dollars for if they cancel?
They put, they put a payment down.
They reimburse it?
They cancel.
Ernie?
Where did we do growing last?
That was up on the west road, I mean, the dirt road.
Dirt road.
Across from the hazards. Down that hill, there was, the bars had to put a cover in to, you know, drainage.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
On, on a number of warrants, I maybe should ask this when Danny's here, but on a number of warrants, we've, we've had brush truck conversion items. And I guess my question is, how much have we spent on this truck? I mean, what is the total that we're, that we're spending? And when does it end? I guess, I mean, I guess the idea was, we're gonna rehab this truck and turn it into a brush truck. I'm all for that, I support that, but I have a, I kinda like to see.
I'll get that information.
Where are we, where are we going?
Any more questions, gentlemen? Vera?
Down the bottom it says, field trip bus.
The VIP bus?
The VIP bus, yeah, that was for the fare.
There's another, there's another one here.
Yeah, there was VIP driver fare trip on page seven, that bus.
Oh, you're, you're talking about the.
The school truck?
Well, I don't know, it's, it says field trip bus.
What's the check number of that?
It's fifteen, fifteen, six, three, seven.
I guess that is the RSU-18, the bus, we just sound, they, they mount, we're using the bus for the, for the.
For the VIP?
Yes. That'd be my guess.
That was from the back center, right?
This is a, this is a field trip bus, our aim is to RSU-18.
Field trip bus.
Yeah.
It was confusing because I had some.
More questions, gentlemen? All was in favor, and it's passed. Town manager?
Okay, I'll try to make this quick, although I don't think it will. Of course, the MMA meeting is tomorrow, Thursday. It's at the main city center, and I'll be in and out on that. I'm trying to take down a date for the sign moving. The signs should be moved within the next two weeks, I'm hoping. But I haven't got a firm date on that. We have a budget development meeting, the 2018 budget development meeting. We're gonna be meeting with the Budget Committee tomorrow afternoon at four-thirty. And that meeting will essentially provide them with an overview of how we're gonna proceed. You've got some of the information, I think. My email. You shaking your head back there?
Yep.
Okay.
Just information about the meeting tomorrow.
I'm having Calvons, as you know, we had a person resign that was affiliated, he's made this guy, and also kind of worked that back and forth between the transfer station. We've put out that, add to that, two times now. We've not been able to get anyone. Sit down, that person was almost a full-time person. In fact, I think they were working forty hours, and they were getting health insurance. They were not getting vacation time, or just getting part-time. I don't know exactly on that, but. We're having trouble filling that. I sit down with Kenny and Gary and talk about what they thought we should do to get somebody in that position, because we're not coming out, we're gonna need a snowball driver and all that. They thought maybe a full-time position, we advertise it as a full-time position, increase the pay, it wouldn't increase the cost of that position much more, but it would give some certainty to the person if they were to apply. So I'm putting that out to you as a, I mean, I'm sure we could go out, try and get, we have the table, but more, we're just not getting people to sign up for that.
Do you think they're right?
I, yeah, I think that that's probably the one way that we're gonna get someone, is to, to give them a sense that they're, they're, it's not just part-time, or coming in whenever. But that's just my sense. I'm looking at you, you guys have.
It makes sense, but I mean, I heard you say Kenny had.
Yeah, I talked to Kenny and Gary, yes.
Who used to.
Well, no, no, I, I agree. I mean, we talked about it, because I was trying to figure out how we're gonna get. Gary's been without a person for all of the, all board talk. And that's a problem. The other thing is, it would certainly give Gary a break if he decides to go on vacation or whatever, because right now, he's struggling to find people to take their funerals. If a funeral comes up, he goes to Scott, or he goes to Tom. Sometimes they're not around. It's difficult. He adds Chris to, the former facility person, actually. That person helped. Anyhow, that's where I'm headed. But I've got a draft of a position description made up. I'm just looking for input from you. We can keep going the way we are, or we commit, commit.
What do you need from us, a motion on the matter?
Well, I just want a sense of, I don't need, I mean, I could actually make you.
You can make the decision.
Yeah, but you guys review the position description. I'm just trying to get some sense from you guys as well. It's, it's a difficult plan right now.
It makes sense, it sounds like it.
I agree, I mean, lots of towns are.
We're having a lot of trouble, the towns trying to fill these positions.
Autoprograms and stuff. Anything we can do to, you know, give somebody some certainty insofar as a full-time position, I think.
And it doesn't really add that much cost. I mean, as I understand it.
Keep an eye on that, I guess I would, I would.
Well, we would budget it.
Yes. I would say go that route.
Any other input? I mean, I, I, if I get concerned, I got concerned with the first item defaulting position. But that seems to be a kind of an issue we're facing now.
It's not only the towns, it's half the people are trying to get employees in Augusta. I can't find anybody.
I lost a word. I do have one, is that gonna be a joint?
Yeah, it'll be back and forth, they'll be supporting each other.
It'll be a full-time position?
It'll probably be primarily Gary, back and forth. And in the summertime, the position could go back and forth, but when you hire a part-time position to, in the summertime, if there's a need up there at the transfer station, we could move the part-time position.
Primarily, you'll be playing summer in two different budgets, that's what you're saying?
Well, it would be under facilities, I think that's what I'm saying. But we're working it, go ahead.
My next question is, who's gonna be the boss?
The, well.
Who's not?
That was the discussion that we had as well.
Who's gonna be the supervisor?
It would be probably Gary. That's where I've had, but, but when there's a need and they can't agree, then I would, I told them in the meeting, I said, look, I'm looking at the interest of Belgrade. You guys can't agree on what the priority is on the site. There's some revisions that have to be made, I understand. Okay, but it's not gonna be made up for that.
No, and I know that, I just, you know, that would be a hard person, a hard thing for a person to come in and have two different bosses. You know what, if he's, the person's over there working at the transfer station, and he listens to that, so it's a good one, but we need to.
No, that'll be resolved, I'm saying. Yeah, I know exactly, that will be resolved.
Thanks.
Okay?
We're good. Okay?
Gotta do what you gotta do, I guess. Good luck finding something.
I'll give you a violation update. DEP is handling the Dane Lane property, the one that we had significant enforcement action against. They did not follow a consent agreement. I'm a little disappointed the way DOT's, DOE's. And I let them know, because we were a signatory after that consent agreement. And they wanted, they were trying to, anyhow, they're gonna put us on a signatory, they're gonna be talking to us a little bit more. The corrective actions, I would have probably been a little bit more rigid, but, but I understand where they're coming from, and I think we can get some good out of it. But nonetheless, I just wanted to pitch on that. I'm close to finalizing our version of the NOV on Sandy Cole with a penalty. And I just haven't had a chance to really sit down and finalize it. But I'll get that out here shortly. I'll be sending it to DEP to let them make sure that I, and to Gary, of course, but to make sure that we're in the same, in the same universe in terms of stuff. DEP is primary on the Marina issue. And I've talked to the DEP person that's handling that, and they said they would get something out of it soon. That was in September, I haven't gotten that yet, but I'm communicating with them, trying to get it resolved. October fifteenth is when the Borzine property is, as I understand it, can talk into the bank, because I told them if you don't do it before the fifteenth, or get it started before the fifteenth. I'm going to send it to our attorney. They were sensitive to that issue, the bank was. So therefore, they said they would, they would have everything resolved by the fifteenth, and would start before. Because they have to get the maintenance contractor and all of that in. There was a junkyard issue, the gentleman in, in the group, the families up on Smithville Road, I talked to them, they have started cleaning that up. That's up on Smithville Road. The Knolls Road, they're putting forward a commercial development permit for review. And that's going, it's supposed to be in with Gary by next Thursday. I think that's when Gary's gonna be in the parking for them, that the bed's open. So that, they're gonna apply, and then the planning board asks to review that. We'll see where that goes.
They're applying for a junkyard property?
They're applying for a commercial development.
What's our call?
I've actually talked to them, they, they said, well, we already have a permit. I said, no, you don't, not for that property, you know. So I said, there's gotta be a fair number of cars up there, and you're pursuant to my notice of violation. I told them that they had to start maintaining the date when the car was placed on the property, and the vehicle identification number, so we can go back and see whether or not a hundred and eighty days, because they have to have it removed by a hundred and eighty days. So they're supposed to be keeping that log, and I'm sure Gary will be talking to them about that. You may now and then see some, some situation from Spectrum. Spectrum has been essentially misapplying payments. They go to whoever, whoever's doing their payment, and we send in the check. They put it on an account that has money needed, right? It's not necessarily the account it's supposed to be on. And then there's a carryover in that account. So they threatened us three times in the last month to shut down certain services because of non-payment. I went down personally, because Melanie had been working with this for a couple of weeks. I went down personally and talked to Spectrum. I said, wait a minute, we made the payments, what's going on? They went through, and they reapplied the payments where they're supposed to be. And they said, well, you know, that's a problem, yeah, that's not right. Well, it's their fault. So I'm talking to Tim Middleton, who's the Spectrum municipal person, and we're gonna try to get this straightened out. I've been pretty, I've sent in some pretty, what was, some firm emails about it, and some concerns that I have. So we're gonna work it out, but if you see something come up with a non-payment on Spectrum. Essentially, sometimes that happens because of the work process, but that's very, very rare. And the issue right now is how they're misapplying the payments to what accounts. I talked about the truck body, we had a little bit of discussion about that. I'll probably tell Gary to go forward and just have it repaired for seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, or whatever the quote was, eight hundred and nine dollars, I'm sorry.
What was the quote?
Browns welding and steel. He's also going to go talk to Doug. So...
I want to go to standards too.
Yeah. Okay. And let me see, that's that in the, I talked about that. What was the other issue? Oh, the fan. I need your input on this because I've tried to find in the files some information that I found in the, the computer files. Apparently, at some point in time, we had a problem with the fan in the salt sand shed. There were people coming up with nosebleeds and headaches and all that stuff. We're continuing to have that problem even after that fan was, fan was upsized. I found in two thousand fourteen, apparently an initiative to install a twenty thousand CFM forty-eight inch fan above the garage door. There is no fan above the garage door, but I've got this. What happened?
I don't think they had money enough to do it.
So it was just forgotten?
That'd be my guess. I don't think there was money enough. But I think Dane had a surprise here.
Well, you can look at the record and why not. I think that was all true because that had to be done.
I think when it came time to do it, there wasn't money enough.
My perspective, it's got to be done.
Well, definitely.
He's working in two hours, having to go outside. It's not a good situation.
Here's what, here's what I'll do is if we have enough money in the maintenance budget, I'll get it done as soon as I can. But I'm having DE, DOT engineers, building it. He's going to, I contacted them. He's going to meet with me down there, hopefully tomorrow. That's why I'm going to have to run back and forth and...
What was the price of that fan?
Seven, seven thousand. This was back in two thousand fourteen. Good for thirty days from the captain.
Yeah.
Seven thousand three dollars and seventy-three cents for the purchase of the fan and everything.
I don't know why that didn't happen. I'm pretty sure.
I think we approved it, but I think at the next meeting, they didn't know where the money was going to come from. Like, and that's...
Well, if we can't find the money in this budget, I'm going to put in money in the... Or we'll take it out of some reason. I'll find, we'll figure out a way, but we got to get it done. And I went up there talking to David today, asking him the same question. He said, "I remember that. I don't know why."
Yes.
So, but, yeah, and I want to make sure that we're not just spending that money for a fan that isn't going to do any good. So that's why I'm talking to the deputy. And with that, I'm finished.
This was on the, you know...
Oh, 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 yes, yes, yes. That's right. This is the file. I forgot to look at my other file because I had it all written out.
Fan at the San Salt Shad, this is going to be working properly. And we're going to ask that somebody can check to make sure that the property wired for three days electrical and check the cost for air quality test.
What are you reading, Doug?
This is from the, this is a copy of the...
That's the original fan that's in there.
Yeah, this is from two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, that, that must have led to this discussion.
Yeah, I mean, this is going on.
Well, tell me because it was two thousand eleven when the initial complaints came in for those reasons.
So, you know, I guess we're going to take care of it.
Yeah.
To help that.
So the other, the other thing that you got that I, I had put in the book for you is this complaint letter we, we got in. I shouldn't say complaint. It's a concern from a family that lives down in the Toby subdivision.
Is this an executive session, do you?
No, but we do have to go into executive session.
I just didn't, I see it was in the back and I was... Okay.
This, this is, this is an issue of the concern about the Airbnb and the number of visitors and stuff to that. And then there was a letter I got from Mike Everly that also expressed a concern about the single-family dwelling, that that house was built as, whether or not it was serving as a single-family dwelling because they sometime have twenty and thirty people. And then there was a reference to a meeting where you guys were informed that, you guys, I'm sorry. The select board is informed that sewage had overflowed in, in, at overflow at times because of the excessive number of people in the house. And I, I did find the transcript, it's not a verbatim transcript, but I had, I had Kenny basically, Anthony basically get that section out. And it says, "There are a lot of large parties this year with twenty," this was in, what, October of last year, October fourth. "There were a lot of large parties this year with twenty to thirty people staying in a single house and the septic system is not rated for that. So we have problems with those leaking into the lake. It's running over the ground." Went on to say, after some discussion, "My problem is just one house. We have heard of other houses. This one we know for a fact because it was a week long of twenty people on the system, a single-family dwelling that place was built." That's, and then Ricky, you were, according to him. You were supposed, you were to have said, "That is a health hazard. Call the state and have them shut it down. It's a health code violation." And then it said, "It's obvious because there are people over there sleeping in the yard and everything. You can smell it when there are people over there." So this is, so I'm going to...
See, I went to the wrong house. I talked to Dick. I thought you took the last meeting and I'm going, damn, we better call them. There's nothing wrong with it.
I, I had sent you an email about the concern that some towns have with single-family dwellings in Airbnb. And I sent back, I talked to Gary and Gary said, "It's still treated as a single-family dwelling." He may in fact want to, I'm going to talk to Gary about how can we manage this because it certainly was, sewage is flowing into the lake. That system is being overburdened and we need to stop it.
That's what state can do, shut them down?
Well, yeah, we have our own capability, right? I'm not just great, I'm just saying.
Okay, so, I mean, get some pictures of it or something like that, you know, documents.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to point this out that this is a, is not, you know, it's an ongoing issue.
Because I went to the house next year and I looked all over.
So with that, with that, I think we do have an executive session discussion that we want to have.
Let's take a five-minute break, please.
Thank you, guys.